Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sands with Jim Jones of Veterans in Politics. Today, we have Frank Friends, Clark County School Board trustee, District C candidate. But before we get to Mr. Friends, Jim, you have any rants?
Nope, I actually have none, other than I-
I thought we were gonna hit it on the third one. This is the third one.
Which one? Oh, just, I already said that. I was going out to Wyoming for five months.
Oh, alright.
And I'll miss you while I'm gone and miss my brothers and hopefully Frank wins his election. But other than that, I don't really have anything to rant about.
Jim, let me ask you a question. When are you leaving?
Tomorrow.
Did you vote yet?
Yes, I did.
Where's your little vote sticker?
Oh, I didn't bring it with me. It's on my door. Oh, no, because Stephanie was very clear on that, that I had to make sure I voted before I left. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't let Stephanie Phillips down.
Okay. Mr. Friends?
How you doing, Steve?
Thank you for coming on the program.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me.
How's it feel to be on the other side of the fence?
It feels like they enjoy the corruption and BS that they've done for the last 20 years.
You be on the other side of the fence.
That's what I'm saying. Seeing it from the other side of the fence, it feels like they enjoy it. Like, they don't want solutions at all.
Now, you're also a candidate, so, you know, before you were asking questions of candidates, now you are a candidate. So, it's a whole different feel, isn't it?
It, it's a little different, but again, it's just the entire system. It's just looking at it from more deeper inside now.
Well, tell us about yourself.
Well, my name is Frank Friends. I'm running for trustee of Clark County School Board, District C, which is basically North Town, the west side, and Symphony Park is kinda how they finagled the lines, the way they like to do. And I'm, I'm running on a safety. We're going to make schools safer for the teachers, for the students and the staff. We're gonna take care of some things. We're going to get these disgusting pornographic books out of schools. And we're gonna have a lot more parents' rights going into what we're gonna be doing. And more transparency to the school board, too.
And you have children in the school or district, don't you?
Yeah, I have a daughter right now and her son will probably be going next year, early, early start for him, four, four years old.
Alright, well, you talked about the violence in the school. What was that, what was that you mentioned?
Oh, the safety and the violence in the schools.
The violence in the schools. So, tell us the problems that you see as far as the safety and the violence in the school. And then tell us what solutions you're gonna bring forth as a school board trustee.
Well, like I said, it's the same problems from when I went to school, except it's actually worse now. You know, 'cause, you know, back then-
When I went to school, there was no such thing as a keyboard warrior. It was like, yo, yo, meet me outside by the basketball court.
Oh, we were 3:30 at the flagpole. We were 3:30 at the flagpole, you know, or when you got off the bus when you weren't on school campus. But it's, it's just ridiculous, 'cause you know, you get these students that are going on and assaulting teachers or assaulting other students. You have a student at a school right now who keeps slapping one girl on her butt. The moms already made complaints. Principal's done nothing about it. That's sexual assault.
It is.
And because the student has an IEP and he's a minority, he has rights.
What about the student that getting their butt slapped?
Exactly. What about the other students? But this is that whole restorative justice idea that they had. I mean, and you could have told from the beginning, that's a bad idea. If you give children no consequences, they're going to play the game like there are no consequences. And that's what they've done the last few years.
That's like all those robbery going on in stores. They say, what, $1,200?
Yep, as long as it's under $1,200.
They walk out with 500 dollars worth of merchandise. They're good.
Well, that's the same thing that's going on right now. I mean, think about it. Just last year, we found, I think it's a 20, 23, 24 guns on school campus. That's what they found. That's one a week. Children are in school for about 25 weeks, 180 days. So, you found one gun a week. That's what you're finding, 'cause a brave student came and told you what was going on. Not because you're a detective and you could see the print of the firearm in the backpack or nothing like that. You know what I mean? A student had the courage to come tell you.
Right.
You know what I mean? And there were about 25 of them, Steve.
So, what would you do about that as a trustee?
Well, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna put arms personnel on every single campus.
And where's the money coming from?
It's coming from one of these higher-ups pockets. They found the money to pay each other. They found the money to backdoor deals.
What do you mean by that? The higher-ups pocket?
First off, let's take the superintendent. Let's cut their pay.
But you think we're gonna get a qualified superintendent if we do that?
Yeah, you can. You can, when you can tell them that there's gonna be incentives, there's gonna be legacy involved. Somebody who really wants a job and wants to educate children and prove that they can take us from the 50th least safe school to one of the better ones. You tell them, you get to put your name on that. You get to write books on that.
How many big superintendent right now?
I think they're paying them $360,000 or $70,000.
Is that without benefits?
I believe, I believe that's without the benefits. You know what the president makes a year?
How much?
$400,000. So, they're making 30, 60 less than the President of the United States. You know what I mean? So, you can do a $200,000 start and tell them, hey, we'll have some incentives. If you can make us safer and you can bring our grades up and you can get the violence out and you can retain teachers and you can stop having these admins retaliate.
Maybe six months, an increment?
A little something, you know, we can do something. And then we'll give you a, we'll give you a book deal. We'll give you, you know, you can go on tour. You can speak at seminars and you keep all that money. I mean, you can do, you can do other things. If people wanna put their name and a legacy on turning something around, they will. Like me, I have no problem donating my entire salary if you tell me that you're gonna put an armed personnel at every single school. I'll donate my whole salary. I'll donate the whole salary. Don't care.
So, an armed personnel at what level are we talking?
Every school.
Elementary?
Elementary. You gotta build a bond with the children.
Going up to high school?
All the way to high school. You gotta build a bond with the children. They gotta learn to respect law enforcement. They gotta know that they can go to law enforcement to tell them things. Like I said, they told about 25 guns. How many you think were really there?
How much do you think that would cost? I mean, we already have school, um, school, um, school police.
Yeah, but you only have a couple here and there and you have them mainly focused in middle schools and high schools.
So, you'll hire more school police?
You're gonna have to. You're gonna have to hire more police. I mean, what are we, a $2.7 billion a year entity? The money's there. They'll find it if they want to. That's the thing. It seems like they don't want to, unless they wanna remind someone.
How about metal detectors? Do you think that we should have those or do you think it's intrusive?
What would be intrusive about it? I'm not searching you. I'm not patting you down. I'm not telling you, you have no, no right to privacy. I'm just telling you, hey, if it's metal and it goes beep beep, we're gonna look at it. So, don't bring it. You know, don't bring it.
One of the things, though, is like, do we really want to turn schools into pretty much prisons?
What are they now?
Well, they don't look like prisons.
They don't look like prisons, but kids get jumped in the bathroom by people. That's a prison activity. Kids get shanked. Teachers get sexually assaulted. What do you have now?
Yeah.
You know, you have, you have a prison ideology right now. You need to change it. You change the environment, you'll change the outcome. The only way to change the environment is to stop the things from getting there.
So, we, we, we can't even afford to pay for teachers. How, how are we gonna get this money for all this security?
Figure it out. You're gonna have to cut budgets somewhere. Somebody on the higher up, some of these admins.
Do you do a forensic audit?
Oh, I want a transparent forensic audit from somebody not in this state. Somebody who doesn't have their hands tied or in the back of pockets of some politician somewhere. I want somebody completely out of it. And we can even do it anonymously. Like, we'll hire a company from another place, not even tell you who they are, not tell you when they're gonna do it.
What are the things you have in mind?
Well, I mean, the metal detectors, you got the, um-
Give me the problem and then give me the solution.
Well, metal detectors, there's a solution. You know, you can even run a conduit straight up through the roof, run it to a solar panel. Boom. You know, that way it can be powered through normal electricity and solar electricity. That'll help. That'll create another job for a maintenance person, you know? So, you can do that. And then the behavioral schools. You have to open up behavioral schools, because that's what's causing the problems, is you have children from the age of five who are behavioral problems, who are not properly diagnosed, because they're being pushed from teacher to teacher, replaced to place. So, you gotta get a counselor in there that's actually qualified to diagnose what they have and stop over diagnosing young rambunctious boys with ADHD, just because you wanna put them on Ritalin. Keep their hands busy. Give them a little bit of woodshop. Give them something to do. Boys don't learn the way girls do. Boys don't sit in chairs and write the thing. They wanna go build the thing and then they wanna destroy the thing and then they wanna build a new thing. You can do that. That's geometry. You can teach that from early kindergarten. But you gotta have behavioral schools. You gotta give these teachers a safe environment to teach. You take out the two disruptive kids out of class of 25, you got 23 good kids.
About boot camp schools for kids that are a little bit rambunctious, as you put it?
Well, I mean, I think that would be more of a court thing, but I think it should be an option. Parents, parents should get involved and have the option, like, look-
It used to be a boot camp, um, school and I don't know what happened to it.
Out, out here in Mount Charleston, I think they had one.
Well, I think, I think what happened was the same thing that happened with our system now is corruption. Judges got involved and back pockets were being lined, so kids that shouldn't have gone were going. Then they were getting hurt by actual bullies, not, you know, just somebody who was a little bad, had a bad day. You know, I think that's what occurred with that. But that's the same thing with the behavioral school. So, you go to a behavioral school and all it does is put you next to a teacher who specializes in behavioral problems. We don't pay our teachers enough to be your counselor, your confidant, your psychiatrist, your educator, and your babysitter. We don't pay them enough and it's too stressful for them as it is. So, get those kids out of there. You'll lower the class size, which is great for the teachers, and you'll create a better environment for the children that want to learn.
Do you think teachers should carry weapons on campus?
If you can get me a teacher that can pass the MMPI-
You, you didn't even mention that you, you do, um, uh-
I do weapons training. Yeah, I do weapons training and CCW, things like that. Active workplace shooter training, all that. And if any teachers reach out to me, I'll teach them how to respond to an active shooter for free. Won't charge them anything, 'cause there's things you can do inside of a school with fire extinguishers, rolled up paper. There's certain tools the teachers can make to defend themselves, instead of just using their bodies as shields. You know, but if you have a teacher who can pass an MMPI, who can- It's like a mental, uh, mental acuity test, the believe of the FBI, and it does it. It's an FBI test. And you can pass the CCW and you can redo it every six months, just like an armed guard does every six months. You need to go shoot. You need to retest again. You need to make sure your psyche's okay. I wouldn't have a problem with teachers carrying, because they have the second amendment right to carry. And when you take that from them and then don't promise them safety by having an armed response on site, you're letting them just basically be human shields.
I remember you made an observation one day. We were at the Ahearn, and I believe you sat on the panel. And I believe they had some type of sign up saying, no weapons allowed. And your statement was, so, if this establishment won't allow you to carry weapons, as far as CCW holders, carry weapons, if something happens to you and you get shot, you can't defend yourself, who's liable?
You should be able to sue them. You should be able to sue them. If you take away somebody's second amendment right to defend themselves and protect their own livelihood and their own life and you didn't do anything to protect it, like I said, that's why, if you wanna solve the whole issue, put an armed officer on the school. Issue solved.
Deterrence as well.
Well, great deterrents, you know what I mean? But think about it. If you have armed officers there, people aren't gonna go there. People barely rob banks, you know what I mean? But we protect them with guns. These crooked corrupt politicians, we protect them with guns, but our most precious asset, children, we won't protect.
That's true. It's like if you put a highway patrol vehicle on, on the freeway with nobody in it.
Nobody in it.
Everybody goes, everybody slows down.
Well, see, and that's another thing. So, we just had, I think it was a 80 or 300 and something, depending on who you get the number from, kids hit by cars in school zones. Well, how do you solve that? It's super simple. You put a traffic unit at the front of the school. You put a traffic unit in the middle of the school. Three months of that, of them handing out them double fine tickets, I guarantee you things slow down.
You're talking about moving these traffic units from school to school, right?
No, all the schools will have them. We have enough traffic units. You could put two in the area. Now, yeah, you'll lose traffic units for an hour before school and an hour after school. You know, and you'll lose, you'll lose them on the outskirts of town, but I mean, if somebody wants to do 100 down a back end road and his tire blows and he flips his car, I don't kinda care, but I'd rather protect the children. You know what I mean? The kids are a bit more, you know, needing of it. And then you can even take part of the penalty and put it back into the school funding, 'cause it's a double penalty in that zone anyways. So, put it all in one big pot and tell the schools, hey, we're gonna divvy this up every, every three months or something. You know what I mean? And again, when you, when you put a solution-
The money from citations.
Get the money from citations. You can get the money, you know what I mean? You can do whatever you gotta do to get it. But you can't tell me that kids don't come first, their protection don't come first, and these teachers don't come first.
So, do you believe in breaking up the school system?
I think it would be a really wise thing to do, 'cause then you wouldn't have-
How would you do that? How, how would that look?
Well, if I had my way, I would break it all up. So-
How would that look?
I would basically, however you have your wards set up, that would be your school district, that would be your senator, that would be your councilman. It would all be the same exact zoning for all of it. So, when you say, oh, I'm in Ward 5, but that also means you're in District 5. That also means your senator's number 5, your congressman's number 5, you know what I mean? You break it all to the same thing, so everybody knows. And you make it smaller, like a small town feel. So, when I see you at the grocery store, I know you're my senator. I know you're my congressman, and I know you're not doing your job. Same thing with school board trustees. I wanna see you. I wanna know whether you're doing your job or not. Are you protecting these kids? Are you keeping our teachers here? Are you giving incentives to retain the teachers that we have, instead of having unqualified year-round substitutes who aren't getting the training that they do deserve and they need, but we're not giving it to them?
Years ago, there was a, um, a, a school board trustee that raised a, um, a point by saying that, that the school district shouldn't be involved in transportation of busing students. That should be contracted out. The school district shouldn't be involved in feeding kids or cafeteriaing kids. That should be contracted out. Do you think that the school should be involved in transportation and cafeteria? Or do you think that should be, that should be contracted out to a private entity?
Let's do a cross-benefit analysis. Let's look into it. Let's do a forensic audit and a health audit. If you can tell me your company can feed our children better than our schools feeding our children and we can lower diabetes by having a more keto-style diet for children. So, when they get to school, when you break your fast and you eat, we should give them more proteins, more meat, more greens, less starches, less sugars. Let them start their day on a higher protein diet.
Take sodas out of the doggone high school.
Well, I mean, I mean, you, you can take them out, you know what I mean? Or you could just say, hey, that's a, that's a lunchtime thing. When you break your fast is the most important thing, so we're gonna fill you up with protein and greens and vitamins. We're not gonna fill you up with starches and sugars. It'll make kids healthier. It'll make them pay more attention in school, because their brain will function better. Plus, it'll bring down diabetes. Now, if the school can do that at a good price, cool. If a private company can do it at a better price with better results, let's check that out, too. Let's save the taxpayers' money while we benefit the health of their kids.
During COVID, uh, the school district lost 67,000 kids. They couldn't find them, because they had different addresses, because a lot of kids were couch surfing. A lot of kids were living with this person, that person. A lot of kids were probably were illegal and shouldn't even be in this country. 67,000. As a school board trustee, what, what would you do to make sure that all kids are accountable?
Well, it's real simple. If you had a better environment than you have now and kids actually felt safe going to school, do you think they'd miss it? No. That's where their friends are. That's where their bonds and their relationships are. That's where their basketball for that day is gonna be played, 'cause he's not gonna play it at the park at 8 o'clock at night, when his parents won't let him. He's gonna play at lunchtime with his boys. So, if you change the environment, the children will come. Just like kids were so safe from that little survey we got, that we had an elementary school in my district that right around the last week of school took a taser, pepper spray, and two switchblades off elementary students, 'cause they don't feel safe. If you change the environment, the children are gonna wanna be there, 'cause if, if you're in an abusive home or if you're couch surfing, would you rather couch surf or would you rather go to school, get that meal we're talking about? Hang out with your friends in an air-conditioned school and then play some sports? You'd rather go there.
So, every school has a, a, a nurse, right, for the school? Do they also have a social worker or a case worker or, or, or a licensed, uh, mental health worker at the school?
As far as I know and everything I've checked into, not every school has them. We have the position, but usually the person working the position goes to more than three schools.
And what's your take on that? How should that be operated?
Well, again, that goes back to the behavioral schools. We open up the behavioral schools. We take the bad kids who need the help out. And now you'll just have kids who have less mental issues, but more like, maybe they need medicine or they need something else. But the mental issue kids will be already being helped by a specialist at a specific school that they're designed to stay at.
And how do you feel about, um, um, different, uh, uh, schools having, um, um, language translated into Spanish? Do you think that it should be English only, or do you think that we should, we should make, uh, some type of, um, criteria for people that don't, or kids that don't read or speak English?
Well-
How, how does that work with, with, with these kids that don't know how to speak or read English? Especially parents that don't know how to speak or read English.
So, if I told you, Steve, this color is orange, and every day of your life, I told you this color is orange, but when I gave you a test that says maraja, how are you gonna know? You're not gonna know. You can only retain the information that you're given at the level that you can receive it and compute it at. So, if they're a Spanish-speaking student, we should teach them English, but they should test in their native tongue, until they learn English as a secondary language. And it's not hard for children to learn languages. We figured this out years ago. You know what I mean? So, you can even do comprehensive classes from preschool all the way up, where you're teaching English and Spanish in some classes. You know, if you go to art class, today in art class, we're gonna learn colors in both languages. You know, and next month in, in math class, we're all gonna learn to count to 20 in English and Spanish, all of us. You know, and it'll benefit the children there, 'cause then they'll start conversating with their friends who only speak English. Their English will get better. And the kids that only speak Spanish will conversate with the English kids. The English kids, Spanish will get better, 'cause they're conversating with their friends. They're enjoying it. They're feeding and interchanging each other.
Statistically, parental involvement helps children excel.
Yeah.
How would you, as a school board trustee, how, how would you get parents to engage in their kids' education?
I would do, I would do some fast-track stuff. So, like, like my daughter, you know my daughter's gifted. There is no reason for my daughter to sit in a math class that does times tables when she's doing algebra and geometry. So, test her out. Put her in the harder class. Challenge her. It'll get the parents involved, because she's gonna need to come ask for help now. Dad, can you help me? Yeah, I can help you. Let's figure it out. You know, she just did quadratic nomials or whatever that is. I, I don't even know. I forgot that math. She came home, did it. Took her seven minutes to teach me how to do it. She can teach the subject. I mean, she knows the subject. So, you can get parents involved that way, you know what I mean? But another thing I think you need to get more parents involved in is like, I, you gotta be able to show them the results.
How about parents that can't speak English?
We have Spanish-speaking help. We have Spanish-speaking teachers. We have, we have counselors that are bilingual, you know what I mean? We have solutions, you know what I mean? But you gotta bring them in, but you also gotta bring them in before the problem starts. So, when you see the child misbehaving and it's something small, you don't get to wait till he starts slapping people in the face to bring the parents in. You bring them in right away.
Prevent a maiden.
Yeah, just, you know, and, and, you know, get the parents involved and that way you get to know them. I mean, I've had some good relationships with some of my daughter's teachers. And other teachers, I straight told them, my daughter's not gonna do that that way and don't even bother crying, 'cause it's not happening. And that was just the end of it, you know what I mean? Because you got to communicate, and if you're not gonna communicate, we can't resolve anything. So, I resolved it early and then we were good, you know?
So, what, Frank, what, what, what made you want to run for school board? What, what, what drove you to say, you know what, I'm gonna run for this seat?
Looking at 50th in safety, 46th in education.
I feel like that for years. Every time we have somebody, we, we, we don't leave that number for some reason.
Well, no, we did. We used to be like 30-something, you know, 10 years ago. But now, every time you see somebody on a regent or somebody on the board, they're a former teacher, they're a doctrine, they're a degree-haver, they're, they're something that's still involved in the education thing, and then you don't get, you don't get solutions. Like me, I just gave you four or five different solutions to problems. If, as a simple father at home, I can figure that out, why can't these doctrines and degrees? Maybe they don't want to. I mean, pushing, pushing some of the stuff they push now, like some of the books we're gonna talk about in a minute, or some of the other policies they're gonna talk about, like, you know, telling, telling kids that he's not responsible for what he's doing and we're not gonna punish him. We all know that's a bad idea. You don't, you don't let somebody rob a bank and be like, real sorry about that, Timmy, but, uh, don't do that again. You know, you punish them. You get them set straight. You get them the help they need. And we just haven't done that. We haven't done that in 10 years.
You know, when I was, when I was going to school, there's a thing called sex ed and hygiene. They didn't teach that until, what, 11th grade, you're junior or senior in high school.
See, we got it in eighth and ninth when I went to school.
Mine was eighth.
Eighth and ninth. But ours was anatomy.
Well, I'm a lot, I'm a little over them, you two.
You sure?
Yeah.
You look pretty, pretty spry.
Thank you. So, so, what's going on now? What age are they teaching the sex education now? I mean, hygiene, they should teach hygiene from, from kindergarten. Wash your hands, brush your teeth, wash your face, comb your hair, change your clothes, change your underwear, right? Change your socks, right? But, but when it comes to the sex ed, they're, they're like cutting the parents out. They're teaching it earlier.
It's not sex ed, and that's, that's what I think we need to understand, is parents.
What is it now?
It's kink education.
A hoo-hoo?
Kink.
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 How you spell that?
K-I-N-K.
And what does that mean?
Kink is like the nastiness of the sex.
And what do you mean by that?
So, you got a, you got a book called Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian Boy. This is in Booker Elementary. And this Booker, Booker Elementary.
That's kindergarten through, what, sixth grade?
Fifth.
Fifth grade.
Fifth. So, gotta be, what, less than eight, eight years old, nine years old? Five to five, five to seven, 10?
Eight, nine.
Nine, 10-ish. So, from five to 10, we're gonna teach them about this stuff. And the, and the book has an Indian boy who's half Indian and half white. Another Indian boy tells him, I hate you. You're, you're, you suck. You're a white lover. What's that? You love white people, 'cause he's part white. So, it's racism. And then he talks about having a boner in class. And the other kid says, you don't get boners?
By, by learning math or did he look the same as teacher?
Actually, in, in this scenario in the book, he says, the books gave me the boner.
The books?
The books. And the other kid's like, I've never got boners off of books. But my problem is-
Was it Hustler, Penthouse?
Man, you know what I mean? Something like that. And then you got books like, uh, you got books like, uh, The Blueest Eyes. This is at Cram Middle School and Keller Middle School. The book has been removed from other schools and other districts and other places, 'cause it has depictive scenes of sexual child abuse.
How, what, describe this child abuse.
Hmm, I, I don't have the quotes for you, 'cause, uh, there's some things going on.
Paint me a picture.
It's abuse of a child, sexual abuse, like it, it-
Oh, sexual abuse of a child.
Of a child. It talks you about it.
This is in Booker Elementary?
That's in, that, no, that's in Cram Middle School and Keller Middle School. And you have another book called This Book is Gay.
What does that mean? It's not worth it?
Well, no, no, it's just, it's about gay. So, in the book-
Happy book?
No, it's not happy. So, in the book, they talk about teaching kids how to use Grindr, which is a pro-sex app for men hooking up with men.
A grinder?
Grindr. It's an app. Then they teach about scat.
There's an app called Grindr?
There's an app called Grindr.
And it teaches you how to hoo-hoo?
Hook up with other men randomly.
How to hook up with other men?
Randomly. Randomly, yeah.
It teaches you how to do that?
Yep, tells you all about it. So-
What, what elementary school is this?
That's not an elementary. That's in middle schools and high schools. But it also, it also speaks about-
What middle school, high school teaches you how to do that?
Oh, there's a few of them. There's a whole list of them.
Well, let's, let's hear them.
Well, I don't, I don't have them written down right here, 'cause there's so many of them.
Give me a couple.
Um, let's see, Miller, Robinson, Von Tobal, Brenly, Gunderson.
And how do you know a list, Mr. Friends?
'Cause the library has to report what books they have and you get to write a letter to the librarian. Believe it or not, the librarian has the power to pull these books if they choose not to.
These are in these kids' high school and junior high school libraries?
Do you know what scat is?
Scat?
Scat.
I mean, like a cat. Scat cat, right?
No, 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 no. Scat is the use of urine, feces, or blood during intercourse.
What the heck is all this?
It's called This Book is Gay.
Jim, you knew about this?
No. And the worst part is, is like, so, it's called This Book is Gay, but you have wonderful groups like GAG. Gays Against Groomers.
Gays Against Who?
Groomers.
Groomers.
And they want nothing-
People that comb their hair?
No, people that try to teach children this stuff.
They call them, oh, groomers.
Grooming the child to be overly sexual. So, Gays Against Groomers are completely against this book, 'cause it does not-
Society is really changing.
Man, well, I mean, they're trying to say that this is comprehensive sex education, because it's teaching about gay people. And gay people are telling you, no.
They didn't even teach about straight people when I was growing up. None of them go teach about gay people?
Well, that's the thing, like, they, they want, they wanna over-sexualize the kids. And this is just pure pornography. There's another one, I think it's called Gender Queer, where it shows a girl sucking the strap-on of another girl. It's illustrated, like drawn.
I thought these books were like outlawed in schools.
No.
Like, if you get caught with a-
Nope.
Penthouse magazine, you're gonna get some kind of, um, discipline-
Distributing pornography to a minor.
Or something, huh?
Distributing pornography to a minor. Distributing pornography to a minor.
That's what the school is doing now.
I mean, what would you think a girl sucking on a strap on of another girl is outside of porn?
And this is legal?
League.
And nobody's complaining about it.
Oh, 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 there's a wonderful group called uh Moms for Liberty, which has endorsed me. Hey ladies. Um, and they want these books out.
Who who put these books in the first place? Moms Against Liberty?
I don't know. Um, I I have no clue who put them in. I just know they won't take them out. Moms for Liberty has been on the fight for several years about this. They write the librarians, they tell you exactly what the book is. They'll even tell you what page the graphic thing is on and the librarian says, no. We don't, we don't.
Worried about why our kids are so disrespectful?
Well, they're misbehaved, they're oversexualized, there's no consequences to anything. That's why you're getting the outcomes you're getting. I mean, and the science is there, we all know it, you know what I mean? You can go look what happens when you expose children to pornography. They become more violent and more likely to sexually offend one of their own peers. But yet you're giving them books like this and you're teaching them that this is comprehensive sex education. Now, that is kink education. Even even like I said, GAG, Gays Against Groomers wants nothing to do with these books. They've asked people to stop saying that it's gay sex education, cause it's not.
So, okay, since we're on this subject, wha- 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 how do you feel about those gender neutral bathrooms and? And all this other stuff that's going on with these schools?
Well, gender neutral bathroom to me is one stall, one person goes in and one person comes out.
Like a family bathroom at the at the restaurant. That's fun.
Everybody has their privacy. Everybody is is entitled to that.
Well, how do you feel about the these kids that feel a little um, like male feel estrogenous or. Or or female feel a little.
So you're talking about gender dysphoria?
Testosterone is shit.
You're talking about gender.
Some new words. It's kinda like, so you got a girl that's pretty much a tomboy.
Yeah.
But now all of a sudden.
That's what we used to call them, tomboys.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they were they were some of the coolest people to hang around.
Yeah.
They climb trees, climb trees, play basketball.
Beat up a girl for me. And it's one of those things, but but now if you're a tomboy, you're being taught like, oh, well, you were actually.
Born in the wrong body.
Right.
So that's gender dysphoria, you know what I mean? So you have that, which we've already, I believe the. WPATH just dropped a fifteen year study that proves if you leave gender dysphoric people alone. Just leave them alone.
Right.
Let them go through puberty.
Right.
They grow out of it and they just become gay adults. That's it. They just become gay adults. I got a lot of gay friends. I love them and I'm glad they're here. Those are my friends. They're good people. Leave people's sexuality alone and let them go through it. When you start injecting them with things, they've proven that it increases the suicide rate to forty percent to forty three percent. They don't know exactly where the number's at.
What what is the suicide rate in the schools?
Well, it all depends if you're doing the gender dysphoric kids or if you're doing suicide rate back during covid. Back during covid, it spiked as well. Because we knew the psychological effects of children not seeing people's faces to communicate. And you also kept children at home with their abusers. So they had nobody to report to, cause teachers and counselors are first reporters. And they see signs and and they do a good job. You know what I mean? Don't take nothing away from our teachers and our counselors. They see things. But the problem is, is now you kept these kids at home with their abuser and their abuser has nothing to do but take it out on them. So the suicide.
Unless the teacher's one of the abuser, like going out one of the students.
Oh, well, just we just saw that, that substitute teacher that was writing the notes and kissing girls. You know, we just saw that. So I mean, you have that too, but you have that in every part of society. You have evil people. But my problem is you don't need to add to the evil or the stress of being a child growing up. You know what I mean? So you don't need to inject them with anything. You don't need to tell them that they are whatever they think they are. I mean, my son loves the water. He doesn't get left alone in a bathtub, cause he's not a mermaid, no matter how much he might think he's a one. He's not. He's a little boy who loves water. And that's it.
What about these kids that that do cut in and on all this? Um, should should we also ban this TikTok?
Well, to me, I mean, uh, the the schools have really nothing to do with that. That goes back to the parents, but I think.
Should the school have some type of thing in place that that they 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 kill all the wifi?
I wouldn't have a problem with the school killing the wifi as long as they didn't kill the cell signal. And the reason being is, my daughter is going to call me before she calls somebody else. I'm her first line. But when she calls the police, my daughter knows how to report situations.
Back in my day, Mr. Friends, we didn't have no phone to call anybody. And you had. We worked out just fine.
But you also had nine one one get overloaded. You had people give bad descriptions of things that were going on. You know what I mean? And then the other day, we had nine one one go down. So you're gonna tell me the school is responsible for my daughter's safety, but they can't call nine one one and she can't call me? I don't think so.
Well, back in my day, they didn't have a problem calling nine one one.
Back in your day, we didn't have school shootings.
Oh, yes, we did.
No, you didn't.
Oh, yes, we did. I'm from the boogie down Bronx, my friend. We had school shootings.
So when, cause.
We we had metal detectors in school.
Yeah.
So that tells you, why would they have metal detectors? Because there's some.
Yeah, there's some things going on. But your school shootings weren't considered school shootings, cause they were off campus into the school, not inside the school.
Well, they were on campus.
You you'd have to show me the stats on that.
That was one time, I wa- I went to Inwall, I was sorry, I went to Harriers Schuman in 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 um high school. In uh, in um Co-op City and we had students shooting out with tops.
In the school?
Yeah, on school property.
Uh, on school property is different than.
It wasn't inside the school, but it was outside the school on the property.
No.
Hey, I have a property line around my house.
I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying, but that's how they trick the stats. That's how they trick the stats. So you, well, we just had uh sixty something people shot this weekend in Chicago.
Really?
Yeah, seven died.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Of course you did. Of course you did. You'll never hear about it. But that's what I'm saying. There's a difference between having. Steve, you know, all I do is read stats. I read stats, I look for solutions. That's all I care about. Cause the stats will give you the solutions and you'll find the probable outcomes, you know what I mean? So that's the thing. You didn't have school shootings in your school. You had school shootings around school property. That they classified as school shootings, but they're not school shootings. Just like, do you know what a mass shooting is? A mass shooting is anytime three or more people are shot. Now, they've changed it because mass shootings, they want it to specifically mean schools and they don't want certain areas to get mass shooting up. Now they change it to four people. So that they could play with the stats and the numbers of where these shootings are occurring.
So let me ask you a question real quick, Frank. As long as I've known you, you're a very intelligent guy. But and I think it's great you're running for the school board. But half of that's that stuff and you educated the heck out of me, but how are you gonna? Those conversations, like how are you going to talk to a peer on the school board to get them to understand what you're saying? Because they're they're not gonna be equipped to understand half of what you're saying.
I see, I I I don't think that's true. I think they will. Especially like, if you look for the candidates that Moms for Liberty has put up and endorsed and some of the candidates even you guys have endorsed.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? They're very intelligent people.
Right.
And all I have to do is show you the data points, show you the outcomes and be like, hey, this school used to be fiftieth in safety. Well, we're at now. Now they're thirty sixth in safety. Here's the three things they did that we could do today that would change the outcomes of our schools. Change the environment completely. Cause if you change the environment, you change the outcome. If kids are safer and happier at school, they're not bringing guns to school.
Right.
If you got metal detectors, they're definitely not bringing guns in the school campus. They might leave them outside or put them underneath the trash can. Across the neighbor's street or something. They might do that, but they're not bringing them on to school campus.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And that's the thing, you can you can show people data points and most people have the intelligence to understand it. You know what I mean? Just like I could tell you right now, the most law abiding and most diverse group in America from ages twenty one to ninety with black people, white people, Mexican people. Muslims, Christians, Catholics, everything, most diverse group and most law abiding group in America, CCW holders. They they commit less crime than off duty police officers.
Yeah.
But you tell people that and they think.
Kind of mellows road rage too.
It does. It does, you know what I mean? But that's the thing. But you tell people, oh, gun people, oh, gun people, gun people are horrible. Actually, we're the best people in America. We we don't commit crimes. We don't cause problems. You know what I mean? We we do solve some problems, you know, CCW holders end a lot of mass shooter things. And that's where the statistics come from. The the three seconds to three minutes, onsite personnel ends a threat three seconds to three minutes. Non onsite personnel, it takes three to twelve for cops to get there. Why? Because everybody's calling. Nobody knows what they're saying, cause they're panicked. Like I said, my daughter knows how to call the police officers. She knows how to respond to them, how to give them specific cop speak. So that the the dispatcher gets it faster to the police.
Maybe that should be a class, when when kids learn how to identify um people, facial features. Color clothes, um license plates, color cars, what type of car.
Police code, you know what I mean? If I if I call the cops and I'm like, hey, I got a, I got a four thirty four to four thirteen with a B. BMJ wearing a pink shirt and a marine hat. I don't have time to have the dispatcher. How do you know? What are they wearing? How tall are they? What do you think? Do they got guns? Are they on drugs? When I start giving the numbers and what they're wearing in that description, that dispatcher's quiet. They take it down and they get it right to the cops. I just saved sixty seconds and just understanding how to explain it. But that's the same thing with the school board people. If I can explain it to them and I can show them the stats and the probabilities of how to change things. They'll they'll get on board because if they don't, I'm gonna be very transparent. I'm gonna hold town hall meetings. I'm gonna hold Zoom meetings. I'm gonna meet at the West Side Library. I'm be like, I told these school board people how to stop school shootings. Here's how, here's schools that don't have shootings. When's the last time you heard of a shooting at a Jewish school? They have armed guards at the front of the school, like as soon as you walk in, they're right there. Cause they know that their children are their most precious commodity. We need to understand that too. And we need to debunk that whole, you know, make it feel like it's a prison. It already is. There's kids getting jumped, there's kids getting beat up, kids are getting assaulted in the bathroom. That's prison. That's what prison does. They wait till the guards aren't there and three or four of them jump you in the bathroom. And they take your lunch tray or they take your shoes. Hmm? Oh, absolute cowards. But the problem is, is if you give no consequence, you raise cowards. And we haven't given this generation consequences. And I'm not saying throw the book at them tomorrow. Hey, you're suspended for a week. Hey, you don't have this privilege. Hey, you're off the football team. Hey, your dad needs to come down here and lose a day he's worth to pay to come talk to me. You gotta gradually bring it up because you've given them no consequences. You can't just throw the book at them right away. And again, how many of these kids are not properly diagnosed? You know what I mean? Cause they're pushing them from place to place. This kid reads at a third grade level, but he's a ninth grader. You don't think that's frustrating for him? You don't think he knows that he's not that smart? And now everybody's gonna pick on him and everybody's gonna push his buttons, cause they know he responds to anger. And he's gonna see, hey, let's see who could piss Tommy off today. You know what I mean? And people will play that game. You have to stop it. You know what I mean? And but that's how I would do it. I would be transparent and I would straight tell parents, I gave them the solutions. And this trustee doesn't wanna vote for it, cause they're so worried about how it's gonna be perceived. I don't care how things are perceived. I care the results that we're gonna give the parents and the children. Think about it. Nothing I've said is popular, even when I interviewed with you guys before. Nobody wants guns there. Nobody wants any of this there. Everybody likes this gender ideology stuff. None of none of I said is popular, but you can't argue the statistics and the facts. You can't. The data is there. If they just did a fifteen year study telling you you need to stop this stuff, cause it's increasing suicide. Well, if you don't wanna stop it, then that means you might like the suicide. If you don't wanna protect these children more than you wanna protect your bank or your stupid corrupt politician, then maybe you like the outcome. And that needs to be exposed. And that's that's what I would do with the transparency of it, you know, and talk to the school board trustees. I'm willing to work with them, you know what I mean? But once I tell you the idea and I give you the school that's implemented and the name of the program and how it was done and how it worked. And it's worked for three years in this place, you can't tell me our students aren't just as good as those other students. They just didn't know about the program. They didn't have the opportunity. And that's because somebody higher up kept that opportunity from them.
Thank you, Mr. Friends. Jimmy, have anything else? No, I'm just, uh, I was I was really surprised when you decided to run, but I'm very happy. I'm very happy you are running and I wish you the best in your race. And I really enjoy your passion for kids and being solution based.
Yeah.
You know, I I really appreciate that a lot. We need more people like you that are willing to do that, because running for office is tough. And they and then trying to get people to understand, what does a school board trustee do? Why should I vote?
Well, I've already been told that I'm unsafe for children and I don't follow the law from current trustees now.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, you know.
Well, Mr. Friends, um, I need you to look at that camera and and tell folks why they should go to the voting booth and vote for you and any point of contact you might have.
How you guys doing? My name is Frank Friends. I'm running for school board trustee of District C. If you want better results for your children and for yourself and your community, I'm who you need to vote for for District C. We're gonna fix it. We're gonna be solution based. We're gonna be transparent. You can reach out to me on Facebook right now at Frank Friends. My DM is open to anybody. Uh, votefrankfriends.com is the website. It is under construction right now. But early voting is already started and if I get enough votes, you guys don't have to come back out and vote again. I just go straight through. So again, if you want solutions and you want transparency, vote Frank Friends.
It's disappointing that your website is on the construction. We started early voting, what? Friday?
Friday, yeah. I had to spend eight hundred dollars fixing my car.
Well, Mr. Friends, I'd like to thank you for coming on the program. It was very enlightening, huh, Jim?
Yeah.
Folks, that's uh Frank Friends. He is a candidate for Clark County School Board, District Letter C. And um, I have personally endorsed Mr. Frank Friends for this seat. And hopefully that uh, you'll take my endorsement and go vote for him. If you don't, if you don't live in District C. You might know somebody that lives in District C. Give them a call and tell them to vote for Frank Friends. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jonas with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.